Everyone's time, get going. Hello, everyone. My name is Michael Steinbrook. I am a volunteer facilitator for the town hall this evening at the request of our mayor Philip Kramer, who was host of the event and with us today, we have an expert on infectious disease and in particular, just done pining work around HIV Hep B and C, if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Ronald Nahas, who has an office right here in Franklin. So he's a local guy. So welcome and Mr. Mayor, you want to kick us off? We'll take questions. I'll keep track of some questions as Dr. Nahas and Dr. Kramer have a conversation. Then we'll take questions from the press. We have the Franklin reporter and advocate and tap into Franklin here and then we'll take additional questions from the chat on Facebook. All right. So take it away, Mr. Mayor. Okay. And happy birthday to Bill Bowman. Sorry, don't want to forget that.
Thank you very much.
Phil's gonna sing happy birthday for you.
Oh. Joy.
Maybe we'll leave that out of the agenda.
I also learned some more credentials of Dr. Nahas today. He's an epidemiologist for, you said, ten hospitals? Or explain that?
I'm the hospital epidemiologist at Robert Wood Johnson Somerset. But the organization which I lead, ID Care, were a group of forty-five physicians specializing in infectious disease and we do the work of epidemiology and infection prevention at about ten hospitals in New Jersey.
And very briefly, what is epidemiology?
Epidemiology is about the study of infectious diseases in particular as it relates to COVID and how it interacts with, how it evolves, how it develops, how it's transmitted through human populations. Epidemiology could also address things around cardiac disease and how that might affect population. So it's really about how disease affects large populations.
Okay, great. So we have broadened your credentials. The, so this talk is about the Delta variant and vaccinations. And just very quickly, what is a variant and why are we talking particularly about Delta?
So variants describe changes in a virus, doesn't have to be the COVID or SARS-CoV-2 virus. But basically, any virus, any germ can mutate. And if it mutates, it changes something about the virus that changes its behavior. And when the behavior changes enough, science, microbiology identifies that as a variant. The World Health Organization, the CDC, as it relates to the COVID virus, we identify variants of interest, variants of concern. The variants of concern are the ones that have changed a lot and cause really significant impacts on the disease or the transmissibility. And Delta is a variant of concern because the mutations that have occurred cause it to be more transmissible. And we're not certain, but maybe a little bit more severe in the character of the disease.
Okay. It's more severe, but seems like fewer people are dying.
Yeah, that's a great point, Mayor. Thank you, because the vaccine works. And so one of the things that I know we'll probably talk more about is how very important that is to realize that indeed the virus itself in the unvaccinated individuals may cause more serious disease. However, even though we're seeing and hearing about the dramatic increases in cases that are occurring not only in this state, but really more so in unvaccinated states, the disease is more severe in the unvaccinated. If you're vaccinated, you're protected. You're not likely to need a hospital, you're not likely to need an ICU, and you're not likely to die. And really, that was the goal of the vaccine, was to keep us mildly ill, if you will, and prevent overwhelming the health systems and prevent death. And it's done that. So it's pretty cool.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna push things. So if I'm vaccinated and all those things you just said are true, why do I need a mask?
Well, that's a really good question. And the principal reason that you need a principal reason you need a mask is because there's still a significant number of people who are unvaccinated. And the goal here and the reason for the masks are to protect the unvaccinated. That's the principal reason that we're being asked to wear masks again because we had such a large number of individuals, including people under twelve children who are unable to get vaccinated. And so the purpose of the mask is what's called source control. Source control means that if you happen to be the vaccinated individual who gets a mild illness, because it will be mild, you could still cause the disease to be transmitted. And if there are people in your circle, in your contact who are unvaccinated and they get the disease, they could be severely ill, require a hospital, require an ICU, or succumb to that disease. And so the purpose of the mask is source control primarily. There's a small incremental benefit in the mask to protect you from the virus getting in. But frankly, the masks that we generally wear, the cloth masks or the surgical masks aren't really that tightly fitting or snugly fitting as would be what we all might have heard of as an N95, which actually closes off all the air passages. And so in the absence of that, those masks that we wear generally when we're out are not designed to protect you. They're designed to limit you from committing, transmitting the disease to others.
Okay. What percentage of the virus out there? I'm not wording it correctly, but you know what I mean. What percentage of the virus out there is Delta?
Right now, basically all. I mean, virtually all the virus circulating in the United States and in New Jersey is the Delta variant. Small number, probably no more than eight, nine percent represents other variants. That bears watching. Like the virus has mutated throughout the last eighteen months, we fully expect that there will be other mutations that will create other variants. And so we may see that percentage change. Frankly, if you go back two, three months ago, eighty percent of the virus circulating was the Alpha variant. And within a two to three month period of time, because of the transmissibility of Delta, it totally flipped. And it's now ninety percent plus is Delta. And we'll watch that over the next several months to see if another mutation occurs and it flips again.
So why would a virus, it was barely around, all of a sudden now takes over? I, I know from the science of it, that's very interesting.
It really has to do with the nature of the mutation, which caused it to be so transmissible. So some may be familiar with what we call the R naught. R naught is a term epidemiologists use to describe how contagious a germ virus, bacteria, parasite is on transmission from person to person. So if we go back and the term we use is the ancestral strain, the original strain that we all lived through back in March, April, May, that ancestral strain had an R naught of somewhere around two. What that would mean is that in a population that is unvaccinated, every individual who gets that virus would transmit it to two others. When the Alpha variant became predominant in the US and in New Jersey in January, February, March, that virus mutated to a more transmissible strain. That's why it overtook the ancestral strain, the R naught of the Alpha virus was about three. That means in a room full of unvaccinated individuals, a person would likely transmit that to three other people. So we went from two to three. And then the virus mutated again. And the mutation occurred in India. Some of you may remember the catastrophic caseload in India back about three or four months ago was god awful. That virus was Delta. And the R naught of Delta is eight to nine. That means that one person can transmit it to eight or nine individuals. That is seven, six times, five times the ancestral strain. That is highly contagious. There are only two viruses that are more contagious that we know of. One is measles. That is the most contagious virus we know of. That has an R naught of fifteen. The other is chickenpox. That virus has an R naught of about nine. So that's the reason that happened. It's a dramatic dramatic impact on transmissibility of the disease.
So today we were at the county task force meeting, you were there. And we were told that of those getting tested and they don't sequence everybody who's tested, but of the people they sequenced to find out which strain they had, twenty-nine percent were dealt, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, back it up. Of the people infected, twenty-nine percent were vaccinated and seventy-one percent were not vaccinated. So why does this not mean that the vaccine is failing if twenty-nine percent of people infected are, are, are vaccinated?
Yeah, that's a really important question and I'm happy to be able to try and walk people through it and you know, please, Michael, if anybody has questions and wants clarity on it, please, please, please put them through. But it actually is, is, is a result of the success we had had here in New Jersey in particular with vaccination. And we have so many individuals, the majority of people in New Jersey now, the majority of adults and the majority of people, more than fifty percent are vaccinated. In fact, in particular, if you look at the group over twelve and Mayor, help me with the number, I don't remember it exactly, but I think, I think the commissar, the county epidemiologist said, I think seventy-five percent or maybe even more were vaccinated who are over twelve in this county, leaving only twenty-five percent of the population without vaccination. So that means the majority of people, overwhelming majority are vaccinated. The vaccine doesn't work a hundred percent. That was never the goal. If you remember against the ancestral strain, the vaccine worked ninety-five percent of the time to prevent infection. It prevented serious disease all the time. Del, against Delta, the vaccines that have been deployed work eighty to eighty-five percent of the time against infection. But against disease, serious illness, it works almost a hundred percent. It's ninety-nine plus percent that you won't die if you're vaccinated and you got Delta. But what that means is you've now got twenty percent of the vaccinated population that still is at risk for getting the disease. The majority of the population is vaccinated. So that number is really big. So if you got a really big number of the population that is vaccinated and the vaccine works eighty percent of the time to prevent infection, you're still gonna get some infections at a significant number, but it's not because the vaccine is failing. The vaccine is doing what we needed to do. It's preventing death and preventing serious illness. And frankly, even though those people with the vaccine may get infected, it's dramatically reducing the risk of transmission. And that gets lost in the discussion for a whole host of reasons that can get somewhat confusing at times. So hopefully, the law of numbers is what I describe it as. Success means you got a lot of vaccinated people. The vaccine doesn't work a hundred percent, so some of them are gonna get infected and that's the reason.
So another way of putting that is if a hundred percent of people were infected, a hundred percent of people, I mean, if a hundred percent of people were vaccinated, a hundred percent of people who got infected would be vaccinated people. And we do expect some people to get infected.
That's correct, right. And so it's a failure of twenty percent. So if, if a hundred, a hundred people are infected, a hundred people are vaccinated and the failure rate's twenty percent, twenty may get an infection. But none of them are gonna die, none of them are gonna need an ICU. And so that's, that's exactly correct.
So now you just said it's less transmissible. But there's recently things in the paper saying, no, the viral load or the carriage rate is the same for vaccinated people who are infected as unvaccinated people are infected. So I'm confused.
It gets very confusing and it's sometimes difficult to sort that out. And the reason that statement is getting made is by the, is the nature of the testing that we do. So most are familiar with the term PCR. The PCR is the most well-known test that people are doing to evaluate whether someone has an infection. And when a PCR is done, the, the measure of the activity or the significance of the test, the measurement we use is called a cycle threshold. The lower the cycle threshold, the more virus that is present, the higher the cycle threshold, the less virus that is present. The problem is that it doesn't tell you whether the virus is alive or dead. Is it able to be transmitted or not? Or is it bound up by the body's immune cells? Which is a good thing. Binding the virus by the body's immune cells, which is the goal of vaccination, prevents serious illness and prevents transmission. So when you read something that says that the virus level is the same or the carriage level is the same, you have to recognize that in the vaccinated person, even if the virus is bound, even if the virus is dead, it's still gonna count. But that doesn't mean anything from the perspective of human health. Are you gonna get ill or can you transmit the disease? And that's what's not well-described or even well-thought-about to help people understand that, yeah, the virus is there, but it may mean nothing. You've heard about the term false positives and that's part of the problem with the PCR. So yes, there's virus that's present in vaccinated people. The transmission, however, is dramatically reduced. And so if you look at transmission of an unvaccinated person, for example, it's probably over a period of time of seven to nine days that that person can transmit virus. If you look at a vaccinated person, way down, two to three days. That's a big difference, a big reduction in transmissibility. And, and not enough is spoken about that. They talk too much about the viral load. It's not as meaningful as, as, as if we did a culture of the virus or if we did an antigen test of the virus as it relates to transmissibility. That's what's really important.
Okay. Get you into perhaps a little bit of politics, but we'll try to stay with the science of it.
I'm leaving the politics to you, Mayor.
Schools and kids wearing masks in schools. Is that necessary?
Well, it gets back to the issue, and yeah, you throw me the hot potato. But you know, it gets back to the issue that I just mentioned. Why are we wearing the masks? We're mainly wearing the mask to protect the unvaccinated. So when you talk about mandates and, and I really am gonna leave the politics to you, I think you have to think about it in the context of what are you trying to achieve? If you're trying to achieve the least amount of disease in the population that's has the greatest susceptibility, we should be mandating a vaccine because that's the most effective tool we have, far better than a mask. However, in the absence of universal vaccination, when you have a group of individuals who may be susceptible to the disease, we fall back for reasons that you maybe will handle better than me to the mask as being either less threatening, less, less of a hot potato, which is really not, from a science point of view, the most effective tool. So the masks sort of protect the unvaccinated. We don't have universal vaccination. And so therefore, we're asking, or the politicians or the leaders are asking us to wear masks to protect those that are unvaccinated.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, we should, we should probably just let people know who may have further questions about specific school policy that we did invite Dr. Valley or superintendent who's on vacation, who's good enough to communicate with us, but is not in town. But he will be having a town, school town hall type event later in the month. They already did have one, but as you know, things progressed in terms of developments with the pandemic, they'll be adjusting that policy and he'll be keeping people informed. So you can look to the district website for more information on that. We don't have it right now, but he also did offer to come back on and talk with the mayor at a later date.
So I'll dip my toe and my toe into it a little bit. In that I agree with the idea of children wearing masks in school. But I, I'm not going to say a word about the policy of what to do in various situations in schools. That's up to the school. I have no jurisdiction there and should not speak about it. I think I'm going to put you at the mercy of our press horde here. They're pretty vicious, so watch out.
I got a couple of quick ones. Mr. Mayor and then, and then we'll go, we'll go to our friends in the press. So just real quick, Dr. Nahas, when you talked about that window of transmissibility, is there, you know, in, in a vaccinated person, it being two to three days, is there, is there a difference between this, this, with the variant in terms of how the, that window, what that looks like? Or do we have, do we know yet? You're muted, sir. Doctor, they ask you're still muted.
It does look like whether we're talking about Delta or the, or the earlier variants, that that window of transmission is less significantly so compared to being unvaccinated. And again, it gets back to the concept, concept of the way the vaccine works. Vaccine induces two parts of the body's immune system. One is what's called an antibody. Everybody's familiar with that. And the other is a cellular immune response. Both of those work to help bind virus and make it unavailable to do its job. Its job is to cause infection. Its job is to cause illness. And when you are vaccinated, your immunity binds the virus and prevents it from doing that. It doesn't make it zero, but it dramatically impacts the efficiency of the virus to achieve its goal. So yes, it applies for Delta, it applies for Alpha, it applies for the ancestral strain. Now, we may get a mutation that avoids that ability of our immune system and we're very worried about that. But thankfully, so far, we have not seen that.
Thank you. And then there's a question, just real quick about, you know, the effectiveness, you know, of the originally of the vaccines, say, you know, the J and J versus the Moderna or Pfizer. Is there any new data or information related to how each of those is dealing with Delta?
Yeah, there continues to be information that's being shared with us and actually, the most recent publication, New England Journal of Medicine, which is the most prominent journal that physicians read, really pointed to an amazing efficacy of the vaccines to protect us against Delta. Looking at the experience, particularly in England, which was ahead of us in, in this Delta experience. There wasn't, there was a publication, some people may have seen it because it gets blogged out all over the place, that was on a pre, what's called a pre-print server before it's been reviewed by peers. That suggested, it came from the Mayo Clinic. And I think that was released yesterday, maybe. That suggested the impact of the vaccine on Delta was less than what was reported in the article that was presented in the New England Journal two weeks ago. But nonetheless, still highly effective for severe disease and serious illness, but less effective in regard to infection. But all of them still remarkably so effective. I will say that it does appear that the J and J is, and, and we knew that from the original studies, not quite as good as the mRNA vaccines, but boy, it's still pretty good.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. I just want to remind everyone before we go, we're gonna go to Malik Lyons to tap into Franklin. But I wanted to remind everyone that this this discussion's being recorded and will be live-streamable both from the township Facebook page. And I think, I think they'll have a recording of it on the township website. But Malik, you have a question for the mayor or Dr. Nahas?
Yeah, for either. I, a lot of people are talking about boosters that we may need to take in October or sometime soon. I want to know how will a booster shot impact the Delta variant? Like, why would that make a difference? Is it something about the efficacy of the current shots probably wearing off? Or is it more like it's gonna be designed specifically to treat the actual new variant?
I can take that, Mayor. So there are a couple of things about thinking through a third dose or a booster dose. Almost certainly, over the next day or two or three, we're gonna hear from the FDA and the CDC that they're gonna advise healthcare providers to give a third dose to immune-compromised hosts, immune-compromised people. I don't know how they're gonna define that. But the best examples that I've used to help people understand it would be folks that have had an organ transplant, for example, kidney transplant, bone marrow transplant, liver transplant. Or people with leukemia undergoing chemotherapy might be examples where those folks, when given a third dose, and this has been studied, reported this week, have about a fifty percent increase in their ability to respond and fight the virus. So clearly, for those groups of individuals who don't respond adequately, we want to get them some level of response. That's pretty easy to understand. In the general population, where we've, we, we get the vaccine, we've responded and over time, the natural course of events is for the amount of immunity to slowly decline, wanes over time. But it's, it's withheld in the memory, our memory cells. We have immune memory and there are different cells that protect us. And when challenged, when your body is challenged by a germ, and your memory cells kick in and protect you. The concern that we have is what you're alluding to is that this variant, Delta, or some new variant, will be able to avoid that memory and then still cause disease, even though you had the prior shots. Giving you a booster or a third shot, even if not specifically designed for that variant, gives you what we call an anamestic response. Anamestic is a hyper-response, hyper-responsive immune system. And that hyper-response appears to overwhelm all the current variants and makes your body's immune system even more powerful, even though it isn't a direct match. And we've actually had several examples of that. It's really rather interesting from a immunology point of view. If you take somebody who had a prior infection, which is another hot topic, and you give them a vaccine, they develop because the, 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 the original infection they had, if you will, was a priming dose. It was their first shot. You give them a vaccine and they get an anamestic response. They get that hyper-response that I'm talking about as it relates to the third dose. And when you look at those individuals, that hyper-response is extraordinarily powerful even against these variants, even though it's not a direct match. And it's because it's so overwhelming, the immune response. So we're optimistic that a booster, even if not specifically designed, will initiate this hyper-response and make your immune system very powerful. In fact, we call that, I like to call that the Terminator response. You all remember Arnold Schwarzenegger in the Terminator movies, right? When the Terminator gets shot, it can't kill the Terminator because it just regenerates itself. So if you get the third dose, if you get a vaccine after you've had infection, you've got now a Terminator immune response to COVID. And that's what we all want to get. That's what I want. Can't wait.
Yeah, the Kentucky study showed that it's actually more than twice the, as effective. People who got vaccinated after COVID as compared to people who just had COVID. So very
That's correct.
I have two questions, Dr. Nahas. One was, is, is it, do you absolutely have to get the same third booster shot as the original vaccination you would have had?
We don't know. I don't know yet what the FDA is gonna say, but what I can tell you is that the studies that have been done would suggest that, that you don't. So I, you know, certainly I've had the opportunity to counsel some folks in that situation. And I've actually told them that I didn't actually really care which one they got, as long as they got a third one, if they were immune compromised. And I, I don't know if that's how the FDA is gonna come down on it, though. It doesn't appear that that's necessary. In fact, actually, there are some suggestions that getting a different vaccine may actually be beneficial to, to broadening, if you will, your umbrella of immunity.
Okay. Malik, I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. Did you have additional questions for the panelists?
Yeah, well, one question. Do the symptoms of the Delta variant differ from symptoms of other variants? Because I, I read somewhere that it does, but I'm not sure if that's really the case.
Yeah, well, they don't. It's still the same virus. It still causes the same disease. What is, what gets a bit sort of discussed and, and people ask is, is the disease from Delta in the vaccinated person different than the disease from Delta in the unvaccinated person? I hear that probably more than I hear is the Delta variant causing I hear that probably more than I hear is the Delta variant causing something different. The disease of COVID is the disease of COVID. It's catastrophic in the unvaccinated individuals. I you don't even want to hear the horrific stories of the frontline teams that we've all been dealing with. But when you get the disease as a vaccinated person, the the features of the disease are really pretty much the same. You know, you get a little bit of a sore throat, you get a little bit of a stuffy nose, you get some, you may get some fever, you get some body aches, you get a headache. Those are the feature, the symptoms. What is different is the severity. So the real difference, again, in the character of the disease between the vaccinated and the unvaccinated is the severity. But the disease itself, whether vaccinated or unvaccinated, doesn't matter whether it's Delta, Alpha, or the ancestral strain. The disease is basically the same.
Then I had another question just regarding children up to 12 years old. And any progress or planning or anticipated time when the vaccine or a vaccine might be available to them as they start thinking about coming back in in person?
Well, so we know that we have vaccine available for all people 12 and older. So it's the under 12 crowd that we're talking about. I don't have some inside information exactly when that will be. My best guess is fourth quarter. If it's sooner than fourth quarter, I'll be thrilled and I'll be happy to be wrong.
Right. So Bill and PJ, Bill Bowman and PJ Parker from the Franklin reporter and advocate. Any questions you have? PJ, you're unmuted, so I suspect you have some.
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
My God. A few, a few questions. We start with the the Delta variant. And thank you, Mayor, for hosting this and Dr. Nahas for participating. The Delta is invariably going to mutate into something else and something else and something else. And the booster is currently being suggested to address the mutation. Does that mean that boosters are in our future forever?
I, you know, it's really not clear. I guess the question again comes to the issue about what would be the end game? If the end game is to prevent all infection, then you would need more more vaccination, more boosters. If the end game is to prevent overwhelming disease, if the end game is to prevent overwhelming the health system. I don't know, you know, you could make the argument that we're already there at this point, even with Delta. And that we don't need a different vaccination or additional boosters. And so, you know, time will answer that question. It's really hard to know. I I like you, I'm suspicious that we will have additional mutations that will allow the virus to avoid current immune surveillance, immune surveillance. That's what we think. But honestly, I always say the virus is in control. We've never dealt with anything like this. This is not, although people like to make the analogy to the flu virus influenza. It is not influenza. And it acts differently. It mutates differently. And there are plenty of examples in the recent past where coronaviruses, which is what this is, simply go away. Boy, wouldn't that be nice? I'm not that optimistic, but you just don't know. And so if that's the case, the good news is we've got the infrastructure, the knowledge and the know how had a very quickly retool the vaccine, which is great news. And that's what I would say is that until we know, we don't know. But we have the ability to retool extraordinarily quickly. And we've gained an awful lot of experience that would make deployment of that vaccine, I think, way more efficient. So maybe, we'll see. We do it every year for the flu, right? So, you know, maybe that'll be the case. I actually heard that one of the manufacturers is producing a combined COVID influenza vaccine, which will be an interesting thing. So it'll reduce the number of shots. So we'll still only get one shot once a year. But it'll be your combined COVID flu shot.
Pneumonia, single, etc.
Put them all together in one, yeah. I don't think that'll happen. But 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 it's likely that if we needed, I wouldn't be surprised that we end up having an annual respiratory season virus vaccine, for example, that that would be an an expectation. And I know lots of companies are working on that.
You're a little muffled, PJ.
I'm I'm muffled now?
Yeah, that's a little better.
All right, I'm sitting a little closer to it. I had a question about asymptomatic spread and the need for testing, especially in the absence of vaccines for kids under 12, who are comprising in our district several schools. I see less testing going on, and I I think there's more need for it. And I was wondering what your thoughts were.
Well, certainly in the population that can't be vaccinated and in anybody who is symptomatic while we're dealing with an epidemic that has catastrophic consequences, we need to be testing widely. So there's no question about that. And and the good news is that we now have more testing than, you know, we we almost than we need. It's an extraordinary amount of capacity. It is not necessary that everybody be tested with a PCR. In fact, I'm not actually a big fan of the PCR generally, particularly in symptomatic individuals, because there are a lot of challenges with using the PCR test. Not the least of which, it's cumbersome, requires expensive machinery, and it is a bit more challenging to do. I am a huge fan of some of the antigen tests that are widely available, easy to do, inexpensive and rapid. And think, in fact, actually, that those should be deployed more broadly because there are a bunch of distinct advantages for those tests as it relates to things like transmissibility, which is a big question for all of us, as it relates to issues around false positives, which is a big deal with a PCR, particularly in the vaccinated people. And so actually think that within a school system, you'd want to think about that. That's something that I don't hear being talked about enough about, okay, if we're going to test, which one should we do? I would, you know, picking up on what you're saying, yeah, I'd think about deploying the antigen test. Get the, maybe the nurses in the schools, I don't know, to make sure they're well stocked with antigen tests. They're cheap. They're quick. They're rapid. They're easy to do, and they're accurate. And that's probably the thing to be doing relative to managing, you know, this open school system in the context of still having an epidemic. So I do agree with you. I think there's a role for that. You got to think about how you deploy it. That's the mayor's job, or maybe it's not. I guess it's the school administrator's job. But but I do think there's value in thinking that through.
Actually, with the help of the county, I was able to get eight machines to town, one in our high school, one in each middle school, and several to through the various private and charter schools. So they, most of the schools have one.
The the area of the greatest concentration is obviously going to be in the schools, because they're not able to be vaccinated. But I'm I'm also addressing the asymptomatic spread of those who are either vaccinated or not vaccinated. And the the unknowing are, do I have it? Don't I have it? The only way to know is if there's testing is going on. And I've seen a dramatic drop, even though the availability is plentiful. But I've seen a dramatic drop in the actual testing that's going on. Once vaccinations began, vaccinations sites were plentiful, and we didn't hear any more about testing as much as much. Especially now that the concern from my point of view with the breakthrough of possibility, those vaccinated also not being prevented totally from getting it again. The only way to know is if we're testing.
I I think your point again is a valid point. You need to test unvaccinated folks. And you know, the a lot of places, you know, they're talking about vaccine mandates, which I actually support. But a bunch of places that are doing vaccines are offering people who don't want to be vaccinated to be tested on a regular basis. And that it has to be frequent, though, to your point. Because what you want to do in order to limit the risk of asymptomatic transmission is to be testing people often. So you test them once a week, it's not actually often enough. That's one of the reasons why I actually happen to like the antigen test. I think the antigen test, for example, in the unvaccinated, high-risk individuals could be done three times a week. It's simple. It's cheap, easy to do.
Wow. Yeah, that's, once a week, however, is better than no time a month.
Yeah, except that it's
Yeah, to your point, absolutely. The most frequent is better. I mean, you could get a test and 10 seconds later and count the symptoms.
The the challenge with once a week, particularly with a PCR, is that you can have an extended period of time where, you know, they may not be symptomatic and still have the virus. And you can get it, you get tested on Monday, you can get it on Wednesday, and you're, and then you missed it.
So you you would agree that, yeah, testing is a good thing. Okay. Great. Do I have time for maybe one more question? Now, is this a forum where we can talk about your feelings about certain treatments that are available and being currently utilized, such as the monoclonal antibodies?
As the mayor show.
Well, I wanted to keep it to Delta and the variant, but if you have a quick answer for that.
Well, I don't know what the question was.
Well, the effectiveness and the more widespread usage of monoclonal antibodies as a treatment for those who are infected.
The monoclonals is are a great tool. I think they're highly effective. They need to be used early. The sooner the better. So day one, day two of symptoms is the best time to get the monoclonal antibody. You start getting past day three, four, five, it's too late. So the challenge with the monoclonal is early deployment. It may be better when using it used as a prophylactic. So if you had somebody who was compromised and was exposed, we now use it as a prophylaxis to prevent the development of infection. It's actually that effective. So that would be an important use that actually is not well known.
Well, it's not well known as a treatment, so to call either.
Regional hospitals, all the regional hospitals have well-developed protocols for the use of monoclonals. So it's pretty widely deployed.
One person did ask about blood clots from vaccine.
Right. Well, that's the J and J vaccine. So the J and J vaccine has a a known risk. Actually, it's J and J and AstraZeneca vaccine, but the AstraZeneca is not available in the US. That's only available overseas. But both of those vaccines are what's called a viral vectored vaccine. So the viral vector vaccines, for reasons that are still being clarified, seem to pose a risk for blood clotting or unusual clotting, particularly in certain age groups and in women. So when you look at the large, not large, but the small number of individuals who had this blood clotting problem, they tended to be women between the ages of 15 and 50. So as a general rule, if if you're in that category, you probably don't want to take the J and J vaccine at this time. If you took it in the past, and that's fine. You know, once, once the one or two week or four week time interval after the vaccine is passed, the risk for that goes away. So.
All right. There's a number of questions. Mr. Mayor, you can hear me okay? Okay, just checking. I just want to remind everyone who's posting questions on Facebook just to, if you could just use the chat for specific questions and pose them clearly and concisely in the form of a question. It's makes it a lot easier to sort through and a lot easier for me to feed them to our guests. We do have a few questions. One was the benefits of vaccine for long haulers who have long, long-lasting symptoms of COVID. Can you speak to where we are on that?
Where we are is that we continue our learning curve for sure. You know, long haul COVID, which can occur in up to 30% of individuals who are unvaccinated and get COVID. We still have yet to determine the frequency in the vaccinated individuals who get their mild COVID. It does, I will just say that anecdotally, it seems to clearly not occur very much. It's been reported, but it's pretty uncommon. I see as a practicing physician in the community, I see a lot more long, way more long COVID after in people who had COVID without vaccination than I have. I I don't even think I've seen a case yet of long COVID after COVID in someone who'd been vaccinated. Yeah, the long, long haulers of long COVID after the vaccines seems to be particularly infrequent, which is good news. Another reason to get vaccinated. And, you know, I think we we may find that over time, we'll see that occurring in a small percentage of individuals. But by and large, that's a disease state that we're seeing in the people who had COVID without vaccination. So the answer to the question is, you know, what will it do to prevent long COVID a lot? I mean, you know, that's a really important reason to be vaccinated. You don't want to get long COVID, that's for sure, or COVID long haul or.
There were some questions, sorry, there were some questions related to other variants out there. I know we've read about Lambda and is there anything, you know, kind of down the pike that is of concern or any information you can provide in terms of what?
Yeah, as we said, the variants will occur. The virus is going to mutate. The variant that I'm watching most closely at the moment doesn't have a have a Greek letter. It's it is in Colombia, South America. That's the variant that has me the most concerned. The reason I'm concerned about it is over the last week or two, there have been several reports of deaths in people who had been vaccinated, who got that variant. So I am watching that. That variant has actually made it to South Florida. So we have had a number of cases in Florida already. So I am watching that. It's the only place that I've heard of that had that variant at this point. But that's the one that has me the most concerned at this point.
Right. I guess somewhat related is, so July, you know, there's a lot of talk about COVID being, you know, kind of becoming the pandemic of the unvaccinated. But I think as recently as today, there's some articles talking about how there's been this migration into vaccinated areas. Where now we have the hotspots popping up in vaccinated areas, not just these areas where people were sort of opting not to get vaccinated. Any? Any thoughts on that?
Well, as we talked about at the beginning of the discussion, it's a law of numbers. And so if, you know, if we've got nine million people in New Jersey and they're all vaccinated, and there is a rate of vaccine failure, we're going to see cases. However, if you have enough people vaccinated and you can take that R naught of that virus from eight to nine down to one point nine, it'll burn out. And that's really the principle of vaccine. One of the issues around vaccination is the idea of what are the things that impact the R naught? The risk of transmission. We can all go back to the lockdown mode. Nobody's excited about that, but we can. That reduces the R naught. There's no opportunity for the virus to be passed. The masks reduce the R, reduce the R naught, and the vaccines reduce the R naught. The best tool is the vaccine. Let's get the R naught down to one. It's not zero. But if we get the R naught down, the vaccine, the virus will burn out. And although we have these pot quote pockets, I don't even consider, for example, in Provincetown, that was a pocket of, if you will, vaccine breakthrough. I don't really like the term. But 95% of Provincetown is infected, is it was a was vaccinated. So they're all vaccinated. If one person joins the party on July 4th, that's unvaccinated. They're going to cause disease. It's going to happen. And there were more than one person who came up there that was unvaccinated. So our challenge is, our challenge is not the pockets of vaccinated people sustaining the epidemic. Our challenge is the pockets of unvaccinated people that create these overwhelming spikes that overwhelm the health system. Because those small outbreaks in the vaccinated pool really are not what's overwhelming the health system. And they're not what's causing catastrophic disease in the way we dealt with the ancestral strain or the Alpha variant.
We haven't given Bill a chance. You're muted.
Any questions in your pocket, Bill Bowman?
I have, I I I have several pockets and several questions.
Your pockets spillth over.
For Dr. Nahas, earlier, when you first started talking, you mentioned, and I guess since then, you mentioned different variants coming on. Are the variants getting stronger?
Well, the variants evolve and the the what is, what does the virus, what does COVID want to do? It wants to get It wants to get, it wants to infect you. Then it wants to go from you to somebody else. If the virus is too effective at killing, it won't be able to do that because if it kills too many people, it has no, it no longer has anything to hunt. And so, you know, from the perspective of survival, it's unlikely, at least most people who do sort of epidemiologic entomology, if you will. Um, it, it's unlikely that, um, the virus is going to mutate to such a point that it has a mortality rate similar to, say Ebola. Because it wouldn't be able to sustain itself. Will it evolve in a way that it could avoid immune surveillance? That makes sense to me because that makes it more efficient from a transmitting point of view. Might it become a little bit more aggressive? Maybe. Um, but I don't think it becomes that much more aggressive. For example, even mirrors, which was a coronavirus, was a pretty aggressive, is a pretty aggressive coronavirus closely related to SARS-CoV-2. And that is more lethal than SARS-CoV-2, but it's not very efficiently transmitted. And it can't really sustain pandemics. So you have sort of this little bit of endemic nature of that virus in certain parts of the world. So I don't think it mutates to a point where it becomes so overwhelmingly lethal. Um, you know, more so than what we've experienced. I think if, if it mutates, it mutates to a virus that is more readily transmissible despite immune, um, despite our immunity.
Other questions, Bill?
I do, yes. Uh, I was just finishing my typing. Uh, well, yeah. Mayor Kramer. I'm going to ask you something I asked you once before, neighboring, a neighboring town whose mayor is, whose mayor is also a doctor. Uh, that, that doctor has, I'm not sure mandated or recommended or decreed, or I'm not sure. I, I, I forget exactly what the term, what the term was, but wants all township employees to be vaccinated. Um, do you foresee the same thing for Franklin Township?
So, um, I believe you're talking about East Brunswick. And Mayor Cohen, uh, Cohen, who I've spoken to recently, I spoke to, I speak to frequently and I have a lot of respect for him. He's an excellent doctor and an excellent mayor. Um, he did that and then he retracted it, uh, within a week. Um, and I've talked to Dr. Nahas about it, um, as well. Um, based on the science that he quoted, that Dr. Cohen, Eric Cohen quoted. And Dr. Nahas, uh, pointed out some of the problems with that. And it, that was actually one of the uh, questions I asked Dr. Nahas was about, um, the question specifically about, but I heard that vaccinated people have the same viral load. And that's what Dr. Cohen based his decision on. Dr. Nahas seems to believe that that is not the correct measure. So, um, to answer your question about what I'm going to do, first of all, I am one vote on council and the way our system of government. In this, in this pandemic, because of my background, council has listened to my advice. But what I'm trying to do with council is to give them the information that I have and sort it out to them so they can make their own decisions too, and they will make their own decisions. So is it on my mind? Well, of course, you know, with it coming up, it's on my mind. Exactly what we'll do, I, I'm not sure yet. I'm, I, I, it's, this has helped and talking to Dr. Nahas in the last few days has been very helpful, uh, to me. Um, but I'm still sorting it out in my mind. Um, I think forcing somebody and forcing would mean, you know, basically threatening their job is a step. It's a big step. And I'm always wary of government taking too much control. So, uh, the doctor in me wants to do it. The, um, statesman in me is careful.
On a, on a related note, uh, the Supreme Court rejected, um, challenges to Indiana University's vaccine requirement, I think today.
Yeah, it was today.
And Rutgers, uh, as you all know, was the first.
Yeah. You guys, the council, I forget which meeting it was, de- dealt with, um, the mask wearing mandate. I guess, I think it, what it was, was you, you, uh, made changes in, in who's going to be required to wear masks when they were attending recreational activities. Right? Uh, any thoughts of changing that again?
Yeah, I've been thinking a lot about that. Um, uh, I, I think that we should go back to, um, for a while, Dr. Nahas, we allowed people who were vaccinated to not wear masks while they were doing Zumba. Um, because the restraints, constraint of breathing during exercising. Then Delta came along and, uh, I've actually, uh, talked to the manager today and I, I think, uh, unless Dr. Nahas, um, tells me otherwise, um, I think we need to go back to that. That's my personal opinion.
That's your opinion? Is that what's going to happen?
Well, we have to, we have to work through the issues of government.
What does that mean?
Means, that means I am one person on council.
Okay, so the council has to vote on it, same.
Perhaps.
This is not something that Bob Orloff can, can just say, as it is written, let it be done.
That's what we're thinking about.
Okay. So you're thinking about having the township manager require that in his position as township manager. Okay, when will you make a decision on that?
Uh, I, I'm not sure. We're in this, I'm discussing it with him.
Okay. I'm done. My pockets are empty. Thank you.
You're muted, Michael.
Sorry, I had one job. Keep, keep the mutant on mute. Um, what about, uh, Dr. Ness, any thoughts on the development of the nasal spray? Uh, is it Thailand or China or, or a new, uh, nasal vaccine?
Yeah, some, you know, science infectious disease physicians, we've always had an interest in applying vaccines at the site of entry, the portal of entry for the germ of interest and for, for a long time, there's been a vaccine, a nasal vaccine for children in particular with influenza. It's never really caught on all that much. And we actually have a vaccine for typhoid fever also that is applied, if you will, by the gut. You take it as a pill. Um, then there's a vaccine for cholera also that's taken as a pill, applied at the gut level, which is where the virus, the bacteria of cholera gets in. So it makes a lot of sense scientifically. Um, there's a lot of interest in studying it. It induces a specific, a specific antibody that is more prevalent in the respiratory tract called IGA. Um, remains to be seen if that's really the best way to go, but people are looking at it. Makes a lot of sense to look.
Uh, so there was a question about the accessibility of, um, the, uh, monoclonal antibody infusion treatment. Is that something that's pretty readily, um, administered to COVID patients?
Yeah, it is pretty readily available. I think the bigger challenge is going to be what I described as the prophylactic use of it, which has just recently become approved by the FDA and thinking about how to do it because that's given to folks who are not ill or sick, don't have the disease yet and you're trying to prevent it. And so, um, a, a lot of places, uh, health systems, our own offices, we're looking at ways to implement that and that, that will have to all ramp that up. As it relates to treatment, which we were talking about earlier, that's pretty well set up. I think the bigger challenge is that maybe some providers might, maybe, might not know. I, I find that hard to believe, but I live in this world, so I might be, you know, a little bit different from just knowing about it. But it is, every hospital has it available within its, within its emergency room. And it's important that actually someone who has symptoms that is concerned and particularly in a risk group actually be evaluated to be sure they're not too seriously ill. So I, I think we have the ability to do it for the ill patients. We're working on ramping up our ability as a healthcare community to provide it as a prophylactic treatment.
Right. And, uh, this for, uh, Mayor Kramer, I don't, uh, well, quite, I, I'm assuming the question is really asking about fatalities related to COVID. I think we were at, was it 2006? But it's asking for this year. So I don't know if you have that breakdown, but what was the total attributed to COVID of Franklin residents?
It's 2007 now and I can, I can find out what it is this year. Go ahead and I'll, when I figure it out, I'll let you know.
Mm-hmm. Uh, if you, if you all who are on Facebook have any other questions, I'm not seeing. Yep, I think we got everything. And we're at an hour. So if anybody has any, uh, final comments or questions, I don't know.
I'll have you the answer for you and 39 people died this year, unfortunately.
Right. Um, well, I think, uh, so thank you to members of the Franklin Township Press, tapping Franklin and the, um, Franklin reporter and advocate. And, uh, Dr. Nahas, any, any parting words or thoughts or any, any questions we didn't hit? That, uh, covered everything?
Well, the only parting words I have are get vaccinated.
Amen.
Agreed.
Mr. Mayor, you want to wrap this up?
Be well, Franklin.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks for joining. Thank you, Dr. Nahas. Yeah, it was educational for me, I'm sure for the rest of the town.
Thank you.
Take care, folks.
Hi, everyone. Happy birthday, Bill.
Happy birthday, Bill. Enjoy. Don't cause any trouble out there.